Order for the record is November seventeenth, twenty twenty at four thirty P. M. We will begin to this afternoon's meeting with our call attendants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's me. Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro. Councilwoman Perro is in the waiting room trying to get in, admitting her now. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Uh, next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion. Motion second to adopt the agenda's publishing. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it and the agenda's adopted. Next item is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I've a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will move into our department commission reports. The first item up is from our Parks and Recreation Department, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty budget amendment regarding Lakeview Golf Course. I will turn this over to Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Uh, we're bringing forward a budget amendment for sixty-five thousand dollars that will fund a master plan for operations, an irrigation audit, and some water right research for Lakeview Golf Course. This amount has, will be fully reimbursed by the Western Ada Recreation District, according to the agreement that was signed in August. And I will stay for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Council, any questions?
If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, was, is the resolution supposed to be on here or? It shows the item twenty-three. Presentation, but we don't have the resolution.
Should just be the document.
Okay, we're good then. Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. Okay, Councilman, hold on. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the Parks and Recreation Department fiscal year twenty twenty-one net zero budget amendment regarding Lakeview Golf Course master plan irrigation audit and water rights.
Second.
I have a motion second. Do we need to state the dollar figure even though it is net zero, what the actual spending authority is?
Mayor, you probably should do that, yes.
Okay. The actual spending authority on this item is sixty-five thousand. Was there any change in that? Have that up right.
Mr. Mayor, council members, sixty-five thousand is the correct amount.
There's no change on it. It's a flat sixty-five thousand?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, uh, included in my motion is that it is in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second concur.
Agree.
Okay. We have a motion a second to approve a budget amendment amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Cork will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes and the item is agreed to.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on.
Yes, Councilman Burton.
I just wanted to make a quick announcement since we're on, uh, Lakeview Golf Course tomorrow at noon, there will be a, um, a virtual town hall to discuss and Q. A. Um, different things in regard to Lakeview and that transition. So anyone out there listening, um, know that tomorrow at noon, there's a virtual town hall and the link can be found on our city website.
Thank you, Councilman Burton. Next item on the agenda, item twenty-four is the Fire Department Citizen of the Nation for Brianna Peterson. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Chief, uh, Joe Bajner.
Aaron, City Council, can you guys hear me today?
Sound great, Joe.
Awesome. So we are here today, uh, to honor, uh, this young lady that's sitting here behind me, Brianna. Um, she, we have an award that we're going to give her tonight, uh, the Making a Difference in the Community Award. Uh, in September of twenty twenty, Meridian Fire Engine Thirty-two was out finishing up some in district training and noticed a young girl sitting on the side of the street with her dog. This ten-year-old's name was Brianna Peterson. She had set up a small lemonade stand. After Engine Thirty-two was done with her training, they circle back around to find Brianna still, still there. They decided to stop and get a cookie and a cup of lemonade from her. When talking with her, she said that she was trying to earn some money to save up for a few things and she wanted to buy and that all of her tips that she was getting was going to go to the homeless. Um, around this time, one of the Ada County Sheriff Officers was returning home from work and he too stopped to buy a cookie and some lemonade from Brianna. Engine Thirty-two's crew was really touched as to why she was selling lemonade and cookies. Amidst all the crazy things going on right now, she had the compassion to not only show dedication and trying to earn some money, but to think about others and wanting to help the homeless. It is people like this that do great things in our community, uh, state and nation. She showed, she showed selflessness and love to others as she set out to, to help earn money for a stranger that had nothing. She might have had made, she might have made even a few firefighters and police officers' day with some refreshing lemonade and cookies. She set an example to many in such a small and simple way. What a big heart she has. So with that, I'd like to ask, uh, Captain Warren to come forward and he's going to present Brianna with her award.
Mayor, Council, Brianna. Got a couple of things here for you. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we were very touched when you were.
Mayor, Council, um, in addition to the things that, uh, we've seen with, uh, with Brianna, um, we as a union and as a local four-six-two-seven were, were touched with that story as well. Um, and because Brianna, uh, showed, uh, some dedication even at her young age and wanting to help those, uh, within our community, we too, um, wanted to show our gratitude, uh, um, towards our community as well. Grateful for Brianna showing that example and we also want to, uh, do a presentation. So I'll have, uh, Dan from the Meridian Food Bank, if you wouldn't mind coming up here. And, uh, on, uh, on behalf of, uh, the Meridian Local Four-Six-Two-Seven, and my understanding is Brianna has actually helped at the food bank, uh, quite a bit in the past and showed some, uh, some, some awesome characteristics of, of just being a great person there. Um, Local Four-Six-Two-Seven, uh, would like to present the Meridian Food Bank with a thousand dollar check.
Thank you.
Uh, to, uh, help our community because we know that during this time of the year, with the holidays, with Thanksgiving, with Christmas and with our COVID and some of the pandemic that's going on, that there's been, uh, been definitely a need that's out there. And so we hope that this will help at least a little bit with you guys. And so appreciate that.
Council, I'd say as well, on both, on both accounts about what, um, our employees and our community members do to help one another. Um, and during this time of year with everything going on with COVID, um, it's nice to see the positive news that we often don't see reported in the media. So with this, um, I'll say thank you to everybody, Queen Brianna. Council, I don't know if anyone from Council is any same as they'd like to make. I'm sure they do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Brianna, congratulations and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for, um, just your big heart and your contrite spirit and for everything that you, um, are doing in your life right now to prepare you for, and, and for your awesome future. These little acts of kindness that you have shown, um, that prepare you and others, um, just in, in help others and, and, and we're so grateful for, for that and, and gratefully for your mom that's here. I'm sure that that's your sister, your friend. Great job and thank you for all you do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Um, I just want to say, I think kids show us the way sometimes and what an inspiration you are, Brianna. Thank you.
Councilman Cavanagh, I see you're unmuted. I don't know if you want to.
Oh, sure. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, boy, I want to echo what my colleagues said. Brianna, talk about setting a catalyst and, and kind of a big snowball for our community moving forward and, you know, as Meridian gets bigger, people always hear, and I heard this this week, is I, I miss the Meridian that I knew as, as a kid or I knew the Meridian in the past. Well, what we saw today was that same spirit of Meridian from the past, the present, hopefully the future of someone who cares about serving, helping others, stepping up. That causes another group to step up and serve. And so, uh, thanks for leading the way and it's just really been a great example of our community. Makes me proud.
Thank you very much. Brianna, you're welcome to stay for the rest of this meeting if you are so unkind or, um, however you'd like to spend the rest of your afternoon is okay with us. Next item on the agenda is our Fire Department Annual Report. And with that, I'll turn this back over to Deputy Chief.
Wait for Chris to come back and put my presentation up. He's running all over the place.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Borden.
Just, just real briefly, Joe, before Joe begins, um, hats off to you, Joe, um, and our department for recognizing that too. We appreciate you taking the time, not only to, to stop by and, and buy some lemonade and cookies because you got big hearts, but also to know how important it is to take the time to do what you're doing, to come forward and bring this young adult here to, to be celebrated. So, um, it just shows us that the department still has the eye on the important stuff and, and just really appreciate you taking the time to, to share this story with us and with everyone who might be watching online. Don't ever stop recognizing the folks that go the extra mile in our community. So thanks for doing that.
Not a problem. It was, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Borden, it, it was totally, uh, the engine company that, that brought this to our attention and, uh, Captain Warren definitely gets the kudos for that one. But, uh, we one hundred percent agree with, with everything you just said. Um, and with that, I'll go ahead and, uh, start. So I got, uh, tapped to do the, uh, annual report for the Fire Department. Um, so we'll run through this real quick. Working on it here. Right now. There we go. All right. Oh, look, Lieutenant Harper was here. How convenient. Uh, so some quick lances of what we're going to cover tonight. Uh, we'll cover operations, prevention, public education. Uh, we'll talk about, a little bit about the city survey cards that we get back. Uh, we'll talk about our social media and our public outreach. A little bit on EMS, uh, a little bit on logistics, and then we'll talk, um, about the future, uh, with the Fire Department. Um, some numbers because we all love numbers. Um, so for, uh, our last year, uh, average emergent response times per station, and that's, uh, shoot time and travel time combined. So Station One was six minutes and twenty-four seconds. Uh, Station Two was six minutes and twelve seconds. Station Three is six minutes and six seconds. Station Four is seven minutes and two seconds. Uh, Station Five was six minutes and thirty-four seconds and Station Six is, um, six minutes and eighteen seconds. Those are our average times for each fire station, uh, for total response time. Um, with the responses, we had, uh, over seven thousand seven hundred, uh, total responses and out of those sixty percent of the calls were EMS calls and forty percent were fire related of some sort. Um, looking at the days of the week, um, usually Monday at around five o'clock, six o'clock is the worst time to be out anywhere. Uh, that's, it seems to be when most of our calls come in. Um, is, is, is that time of day and, and day. Um, a lot of people think that firefighters just sleep all night and this graph, uh, proves that from midnight to six o'clock in the morning, we're, we're still running calls. So, uh, that one has been, uh, proved false. Um, our personnel report, um, for our go-around, so this last go-around, we had, um, we hired one, uh, new lateral firefighter medic, uh, firefighter Sletmo. Uh, he's been a great addition to the department. He's been doing great work, great things for the department. We're pretty proud of him. Um, we've had, uh, three promotions. Uh, we promoted, um, J. D. To, uh, Division Chief of EMS. Uh, we had one promotion to captain, one promotion to engineer. And then looking at our staff, um, we had a lot of service recognitions this year. We had five or two, two employees that did five years, four employees at ten years, eleven employees at fifteen years, two employees at twenty and one employee that had twenty-five years of service. So we're, we're pretty proud of, of, um, the longevity that we have with our employees. Um, I believe Kenny Bowers still holds the record for the longest serving, uh, with the department at the moment. Um, on the, uh, prevention side, um, looking at inspections, obviously with COVID this year, um, our inspection numbers are down. Um, we, we only accomplished twenty-six hundred and eighty-seven inspections. Uh, we had almost three thousand last year. So we're down, uh, about five hundred and eighty-five, uh, inspections. Uh, when we were doing the inspections, we found we had eleven hundred and seventy-three violations. Um, the most common were sprinkler systems that were out of compliance, um, housekeeping issues and, um, exit signs not working. So the bulk of those have been resolved. Um, along with that, I also do, uh, solar panel reviews. Uh, solar, the solar business has been very popular lately. Um, I'm actually at a hundred and ninety-one planner reviews, uh, for this year, uh, doing solar panel, uh, installs throughout the city. Um, with Compliance Engine is, is where we've get a lot of our, uh, information on sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems and, um, fire pumps. Uh, we had twenty-four hundred and nine submitted reports from all of our sprinkler companies in the valley. Um, eighty-six percent of those that came in were compliant. Um, we do have some cost recovery built into that that we did a couple of years ago. Um, to date, we've had twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents as part of our cost recovery. And that cost recovery, uh, was going to help fund the third inspector that we're, we're waiting on. Um, on the fire inspection, uh, fire investigation side, uh, fires were down this year. Uh, we investigated forty fires last year and we only had twenty-eight this year. And that could either be, uh, a vehicle fire or a, a house fire. Um, on, uh, Pub Ed, uh, we all know Pam Ward does an awesome job, uh, running our Pub Ed Division, um, along with Christie and Judy and the other gals up in the office that help with her, help her, uh, and also with Herb. Um, car seat inspections, uh, they've done two hundred, they did two hundred and twenty-two last year. Um, we provided thirty-six car seats to people that could not afford them. Um, on the hands-only CPR classes, we did thirteen with five hundred and thirty attendees. Um, and then the big one is our safety classes. They did two hundred and thirty-four safety classes with twenty thousand four hundred and thirteen attendees. Obviously, a lot of these were done before COVID, so we had a lot of people, uh, that were able to attend and we did a lot of online stuff as well. Um, home, homes visited, uh, for smoke alarms, we visited five hundred and fifty-two homes. And, uh, we had eight, uh, CPR classes where they were certified with fifty-four, uh, attendees that were certified. So despite the, the challenges that were given out with COVID, um, the Pub Ed Division is still trying to do, uh, what they can with, uh, training. So they're still working hard on doing CPR classes. Um, we've been thinking way outside the box of how we can still help our, our, uh, citizens and get CPR out there to each other, uh, to the citizens and help also with our, our smoke detector, uh, programs as well. So it's been a little bit of challenge. Uh, the public has been, uh, trying to get, you know, us to help with events and stuff and obviously we can't, uh, but what Pam has been doing has been putting together packets, uh, to send out to, um, celebratory events and stuff. So, uh, Pam's been very busy, uh, during this, uh, COVID time. Uh, again, looking outside the box, trying to figure out how we can still reach, uh, the citizens. Uh, one of those ways, uh, with, with all the, uh, stuff that we've been doing out, reaching out to everybody, uh, we've been getting a lot of feedback from the citizens, um, on our cards that have been coming back. Um, on the operations side, a hundred percent met, met expectations, eighty-six percent, uh, exceeded expectations. Um, on the prevention side, uh, with the inspections, um, we, we at least met expectations and seventy-five percent of them exceeded expectations. And then with the public education, uh, programs, uh, almost all of them met expectations at least, uh, but at least eighty-eight percent of them have exceeded expectations. So we've had a lot of comment cards returned. Uh, as a matter of fact, I just found one in my inbox today. Uh, Pam went out on her day off and changed somebody's smoke detector batteries for him. Uh, she went above and beyond what, uh, was called to help this person out on her day off. Uh, so, uh, really proud of her and her program and what she's been doing. Uh, with public outreach, um, our website and, uh, Facebook, very popular. Um, so we've been, uh, working with Stephanie on how we can reach out to the, the public. Um, and again, that's part of the stepping outside the box, seeing what we can do to get our message out to, uh, the public. And so we have our, uh, Facebook. We have, uh, seven thousand, uh, five hundred and twenty-four, uh, followers. And then on Twitter, we have seventeen hundred, uh, people following on Twitter. And then as we all know, um, Meridian has a huge, um, Nextdoor following as well. So we get a lot of, uh, data through Nextdoors also. Um, and then Stephanie's been working a lot, um, with, uh, myself and with Pam on public outreach, um, with news stories. So we've been working with Channel Two, KTVB, uh, Daily Dispatch, whoever, um, to work with, uh, getting earned media, uh, stories. So, uh, we had twelve stories that Meridian Fire Department pitched to the media, uh, and they ran our stories for us. So pretty proud of that. Um, one of the big ones, I'm kind of right in the middle of the picture there. That was the Fourth of July when we were talking about fireworks safety. Um, that was a joint effort we did with Boise Fire Department. So again, we try and join uh, forces whenever we can with all the other departments in the valley to try and get one general message out to everybody. Um, COVID obviously is, is high on everyone's mind. Uh, J. D. Has been working, uh, hard on that, uh, along with, uh, myself, uh, collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. Uh, hundreds of hours of meetings attended, uh, with our access partner agencies. Uh, they developed the countywide infectious disease program uh, and countywide guidance on PPE usage while on an emergency scene. Um, you, you can see the spike that we're in right now. Uh, the, the media's been, been, uh, talking about it. The mayor's been talking about it in his messages. So this is nothing new here. But one thing that we are proud of is that PPE shows that it works. Um, so to date, we've had more than eighteen thousand cases in Ada County. Our EMS partners and the Fire Department has had thousands. Our EMS partners and the Fire Department has had thousands of interactions with COVID positive patients. And to date, we've only had two known cases of EMTs or paramedics becoming infected. So as a result of patient interaction. And I know one of them, they weren't wearing proper PPE. So all the other cases, our masks, our gloves, and everything that we're doing is working. And so that's a good, a good point. Our logistics division has been very busy. Justin's in charge of all of our apparatus, fire stations, and everything that goes in them and around them. Some logistics significant events this year. Station six was completed and opened under budget. We were about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars under budget when it opened. Stations one, one, two, and three all received new flooring. We took out carpet and put in hard, you know, hard surface floors. That also helps with the spread of disease, you know, that might get trapped in the carpets and stuff like that. We had the apparatus at Station Two was repainted. The training tower roof fixed. We bought some, replaced some heavy lifting equipment, airbags on the truck. Replaced all the Knox box that's the key holders in the fleet. We had a rash of about six months where they all just started to fail, one after another. So we ended up replacing them all. They completed twenty-eight thousand feet of fire hose testing, six hundred and seventy-nine feet of ladders. And fifty SCBA, eighty SCBA regulators, and they hydro tested a hundred and fifty-seven SCBA bottles. So Justin's crew was very busy. One of the big things that we, that he accomplished also was the spec for the new ladder truck. And I have a picture of it here in a second. We purchased, placed into the service a new public education vehicle. Very thankful for that. Annual pump testing of the fleet. New apparatus and check system called Check It that the crews are using to check the vehicles out. All electronic, use an iPad to do the daily inspection of the vehicles. Works really awesome. We'll talk about the ladder truck again. We're starting in on the design of Stations Seven and Eight. We're going to be looking at new flooring in Stations Four and Five. We're converting all the exterior lighting, which has the old mercury vapor lights to LED at fire stations, doing some burn room tile repairs. And then adding nine-one-one status monitors to all the stations. So this is the blueprint of what the new truck will look like. The cost was roughly one point three million dollars. It's a hundred-foot platform similar to what we have. The estimated completion date for that will be November of twenty twenty-one. Coming down to the end, obviously, one of the biggest things for me to talk about as a fire marshal is strategic growth. I know City Council, as you all know, growth is happening in our, in our little city. When I got here, Eagle Road was two lanes and there were stop signs on it everywhere. So in my time here, we've changed considerably. So this was a screenshot that I took just as of last week. And obviously, you can see in the northwest area along Chinon, Highway sixteen area, we have a lot of growth going on. Same in the southeast area out there at Amity, Lake Hazel, and Victory area. We have a lot of growth going on out there. So with those, if we look at our current response areas with Stations One through six, each, each station is a color. And then if you look at our reliability rating is one of the other things that we look at when we're doing this growth. Station one has a reliability of seventy percent. Station thirty-two has a reliability of eighty-five percent. Station three has a reliability of seventy-eight. Station four, seventy-eight. Station five is eighty-four. And Station thirty-six, which is, this is the first time we've had data for thirty-six, their reliability rating right now is eighty-seven percent. So as this growth continues, the reliability rating is going to be dropping. Our big concerns are obviously those two areas that I mentioned before, the northwest and the southeast. Because thirty-four, they're stretched pretty thin. They have a very large area that they're covering. And on top of it, Boise Engine Station fourteen, which is their teammate, if you want to call it, their reliability rating is just the same as thirty-four's. So when you have two fire stations that are right next to each other with the same reliability rating, that leaves a pretty big hole in that area. So with that, if we look at our response areas when we get Stations Seven and Eight built, you can see those areas would be covered. So the pink area up in the top left would be Station seven or eight, depending on how council decides to go with, move forward. But that area would be definitely covered. I happen to live in that pink area, or I will here come March. And my house sits outside the five-minute response time area. So I'm going to go buy myself a fire truck and park it in my front yard. And then the mint green on the bottom of the photo is where Station Eight would be covering. And obviously, out there, the keep is a beautiful area. The plans are starting to come in for those houses. We're looking at so far, six to ten thousand square foot houses being built out there. So yes, there's water out there, but just houses of that big is a big concern. Not to mention all the other growth that wants to go on out there. So our ask is to continue with Stations Seven and Eight to be continued to be planned and move forward because the growth isn't stopping. I just got the plans for the southeast southwest corner of Franklin and Ten Mile. And again, it's huge. Huge developments. Not to mention the one that Brighton's going to be doing as well. So we have a lot of very large developments coming. And we're going to need the help. With that, I will end my presentation and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you Deputy Chief. Council, any questions? And just so you're aware, I did not speak to him before he gave his presentation. So that was all their own doing.
We did not.
Mr. Mayor, I was just trying to remember.
Councilman Holton.
Chief Bonjourneau, adding the nine-one-one status monitors to all the stations, what did that entail? What benefit does that give us?
The status monitors was, that was just, it's a big television screen with a little thumb computer in them. And that allows the captains to see what's happening in the city with just a quick look. So that's what the monitoring for. They were very inexpensive to put into the stations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr. Thanks, Chief. I appreciate your presentation. One question. I refresh my memory. I don't remember. What station is getting the new ladder truck?
This, the ladder truck that has been ordered is a replacement. The, our current ladder truck, I believe, is fourteen years old. So it's going to replace the current one that we have. I believe in the tenure CIP, we have an additional truck company that we'll be looking for, I think in, I want to say, three or four years.
And follow up.
Councilman Burr.
What are we going to do with the old one? Was it just going to be like a backup?
It'll be reserved. Sorry, Mayor and Councilman Burr. Yes, that will be used as a backup and we actually get credit on our insurance rating, having a backup apparatus for a truck. So it'll help us with our rating with the city.
Mr. Mayor. Just to point out to Councilman Burr that the chief did mention that he was going to park a fire truck in his.
There you go. Yes, we'll park it right out in front of my house. Big garage, chief. Yes, I need a bigger garage for sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Joe, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. I am very happy to hear that the number of responses to fires has gone down this year. Just curious, your thoughts on that? And actually, somewhat surprised to hear that considering more people were home and a lot of house fires are caused from cooking and things like that. So just wondering your thoughts on why we've had a decrease and how we can keep it that way.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, that's a good question. I can't explain why there has been a drop. Very thankful that we have. For sure, as the fire marshal, my job is to prevent fires and to keep our crews safe from having to go into these fires. But yes, people are being more safe. And I think it's just going to be the point of pushing our message out to everybody about being safe. We're coming into turkey season and I know Stephanie has been working on turkey fryer fire education. Same thing, the first couple of years that those things really became popular, man, we had like six or seven of those fires. And since we've been working with educating people, those fires have pretty much dropped to nothing. So I think it's a combination of education and people being home to actually notice if something's going on in their house. We get a lot of smoke scare calls because they're home and they know that something's going on. So I think that's part of it also is because they're home, they're catching things before they turn into major catastrophes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you so much Deputy Chief for coming in. I guess a question I have, Station Four feels like a pain point, right? It has the longest response time, has reliability under eighty percent. I realize we're going to work on building a new fire station. We're a couple of years out. Are there things that we're considering to help mitigate that? Can we staff that station up more? Would that help? Or just give me a flavor for how we're trying to adapt, you know, at that station to the challenge?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I know we've, we've been looking at doing the alternate response vehicle, staffing some sort of an alternate response vehicle again in the future that was on our CIP to go along with. Mainly, we're looking at Station One because their reliability rating is the worst out of all of them. But that vehicle could also be utilized to roam the neighborhood. So if thirty-four was going out for training, they can go into that area and cover that area if needed. So I know Chief Butterfield, I'm not sure if he's on. I know he's been working on some, some things that we can look at. Oh, there he is right there. There's Charlie. So I'll let Charlie jump in and see if he can help answer that a little better than I can.
Chief, before you do that, if you could maybe talk to how Station Six has impacted that station as well over those first six months, if you have any real data to show that. Chief Butterfield, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. Yes, I, Station Six, I don't have the data in front of me, but we have had a great deal of improvement, especially in the reliability rate of Station One with the addition of Station Six. Station One, as Chief Bonjourneau did mention, we did have a low reliability rate for a while. It was getting, I think, down into the high seventies and Station Six has improved that immensely, allowing that ability for that apparatus, Station One, to be in service more often for the calls it needs to go on. Councilman Schrader, for your comments on Station Four, it is a busy station. We are recognizing it is becoming more and more busy, especially with some of the extended living facilities in that particular area. Touchmark, for example, Station Four does go to Touchmark quite a bit. So we're trying to look at reasons of why that call volume is so high at Station Four, particularly in the assisted living facilities that do add up to that. And so we're reaching out to the assisted living facilities that are increasing some of that call volume and seeing what we can do as partners with them in our community to lessen some of our responses from the fire service to those particular care centers. And by doing that, we've really, again, as partners in our community, we've, we've been able to lessen some of our responses, keeping that fire apparatus in service for the more critical responses that it needs to go to. And so we'll continue to evaluate, look at the data, look at the call places that that particular apparatus is going to and see if we can, through some preventative measures, lower the response times and lower the reliability rate and keep it in service more often.
Mr. Mayor, quick follow-up.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I guess I'd be interested to hear, perhaps in a future meeting, but how this alternate response vehicle might help with that situation and what the cost would be and how we could talk about that as an interim solution. Or what all the options are. It sounds like maybe we have a specific segment of the community that's causing a longer response time in that area. So.
That particular area, yes.
Got it. So appreciate the follow-up to try to, you know, figure out if it's not a fire and it's something else, how we can respond. Thank you.
If I could add, I think the data, chief, is probably a year's look at data with a six-month Station Six in service roughly.
Yes.
And I think if we get a full year's worth of data, Station Six, it maybe gives us even a better understanding about where all these stations truly are. I know they typically like to report or poll probably on an annual basis, but I would suggest maybe the Fire Department should poll after Station Six has been open for a year and look at what those response times and reliability is for that last year of service to have a at least a good benchmark. Because if it's six months for one and a year for the others, six months can't pull those numbers down entirely, but they've obviously made an impact.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and Council, the numbers that I showed you earlier for Station Six were from opening till September. So that was actually three months' worth of data that we've gotten. So the mayor is one hundred percent correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Chief, one, appreciate having you in front of us tonight and always enjoy having you at our City Council meetings. I really appreciate your insight and added information you share with us on land use applications. I did have a question about your presentation about past due inspections. And I noticed we've got about five hundred and something that were past due on. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around what's, what's causing that and if, if the department has a recommendation to address that and resolve it. And then one more question, recognize I'm throwing a lot at you. What those delays are doing impacting related to land use applications? Or if that's slowing us down in any way else?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh, as far as the inspections go, what, what, obviously, the big answer is COVID is why we're behind. The other reason that we're behind is staffing. I had requested a, of an inspector which was approved. But unfortunately, at this time, we have not been able to fill it. So once I get that other inspector and we can get the COVID numbers to help cooperate, we'll be able to get out and do more inspections. We've been kind of keeping a tight leash on my inspectors because we don't want them going out and, you know, getting themselves exposed. And then at the same time, there's been some, obviously, retirement homes. St. Luke's Hospital, we can't get into them because of COVID and their own requirements that won't allow us in there. So that's probably the biggest reason why. But since I took over as the fire marshal, we've had a need for another inspector because we've been behind. And so with the growth that's coming, we're, we'll once we get that position filled, next year, I hope to come back with some way better numbers. And then as far as, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely caused an eyebrow raise on me where you've got ten percent less inspections this year from last year, but we're about thirty-something percent behind. So look forward to hearing the positive results from that. Do, Joe, how, on average, how past due are these? I mean, is it, have you just had to hit pause because of COVID? I mean, is it, have you just had to hit pause because of COVID or is that, they're not past due, they're just behind schedule?
Some are past due. I think the farthest I have that's out past due is maybe a year or two. And then some of them, we've had to hit the pause button because we just couldn't get in there for one reason or another. And then obviously, some of our higher risk stuff, we're still, that, that's, that was my top priority was our high-risk stuff, our hotels, churches and stuff like that is still number one on my list. But some of the businesses, we've had to just put the wait button on until we get some better COVID numbers or they'll allow us in them. So in the meantime, I'm, we're using the compliance engine to track some of the businesses to make sure that they're at least keeping up with their sprinkler systems and their firearm systems to keep their occupants and employees safe. Because those, I can look at the reports, make a couple of phone calls, and I can write a violation without even have, having to step foot in their building. So that, that helps as well. And I've, I've actually been doing that for the last week.
Thanks, Chief.
And then I'm sorry, you're gonna have to ask the other half of your question.
Well, it just, it all kind of came together. I, I'm trying to wrap my head around about the delays and, and if that is impacting businesses from being able to move forward in any way, shape or form. It doesn't sound like that's the case.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Cavanagh, that is not the case. We're not, we're not holding anybody up with anything. If somebody calls and has a need, we will go out and we will take care of it. Obviously, working with our partners and in the building department, you know, we were able to get Costco up and running in the middle of this pandemic. So nothing has been held back, nothing's being delayed. What we've, a couple of them with like our daycares, for example, what we ended up doing is obviously, we didn't want to be there when there's 50 kids running around. So what we did is I modified the hours of my inspectors and they're, they've been going in either before they open in the morning or after they close at night to do the inspections. So that way, we're lessening the impacts on the public and our inspectors themselves.
Just, just to put a finer point, one of our inspectors was very high-risk during COVID, which, and was not able to go out and actually perform inspections for a significant amount of time.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, one, first apology, wasn't following good parliamentary procedure, didn't mean to step on, on your toes there. And two, I appreciate you providing that, that perspective. I, I think we all in agreement, the health and safety of our employees are paramount. And that's why I was trying to kind of wrap my head around what, what was slowing things down. So I appreciate you putting that finer point on there.
Council, any further questions?
Thank you, everybody. It was great to stand up here and see you all. Now I'll go see you from my desk.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Next up is I am 26, partnership agreement between Meridian Police Department and Washington State University. I'll turn this over to Lieutenant Caldwell.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. So we at the police department are looking to enter into a partnership with Washington State University Criminal Justice Department. Dr. David Makin and his team are conducting research on how police departments can best utilize officer body camera recordings to ensure that we're doing the best job possible. And when they're talking about this, the approach that they're looking at is more of a holistic one. Not only are our officers doing the best job possible on calls, but is our training being as effective as possible? So with this program, we get to set the parameters of what they're looking for in our videos. And we get to choose which videos we send them as well. And so what we're really focusing on at this point in time is communication on how are our officers communicating with our citizens here in Meridian? Now, I believe we do a great job communicating with our citizens and I believe we have a great relationship with them. We're always looking for ways to improve and do better. So with that being said, the videos that we're gonna send to WSU, if this partnership is approved, will be our use of force and traffic stop videos. And so when they look at this, they're going to be looking for certain parameters that we give them on how well are we communicating with people in good situations and bad situations, in, in innocuous traffic stops where everything's happy and also in arrest and use of force situations where things aren't so happy. This is not going to be any cost to the city. It's a partnership in that we provide the video and they provide the research and they get to use the research they get for their papers at the university. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant and Council. This is scheduled to be, I think, on next week's agenda, an agreement, and we just wanted to give you a heads up about that agreement before you saw it, in case you had any questions either now or felt the necessary to follow up with the police department before that agreement comes forward. Any questions for Lieutenant, Councilman Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will, will we be able to see the, the research or the, the outcomes of the study?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilman Schrader, yes, we, we will get copies of all the research and the results of said research prior to any publication. And we also have the right to, they won't use us as a city or our department in there without our express permission. But short answer to your question is yes, we will get the results.
Thank you.
Council, any further questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is update from the mayor's office regarding CARES Act for your municipal small business grant program. It's over to Mr. Miles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here with you. I will keep it brief. I know you've got some other things on the agenda. Share my screen here real quick with some information that I sent out yesterday as well. I've got the CARES Act Small Business Grant Action Item Recommendation in front of you. As you'll recall, about, let's see, back in mid-September, the council approved a million-dollar allocation for the Small Business Grant. A little overview of the CARES Act funding to date, because I know there's, it's always good to update on that and then look at the small business grants as well. As you see across the top there, you can see that to date, about $1.6 million of CARES Act funding has been earmarked for expense by the city, leaving approximately $1.8 million of funds aside. That $1.6 million of earmarked funds includes the $1 million that council approved for the Small Business Grant program. And that program in and of itself makes up roughly 60% of the CARES Act funding to date. You can see over on the left, or excuse me, on the right, the business support programs, about $1 million to the Small Business Grant Program and the remainder of that to the Keeping Meridian Healthy Initiative that's in partnership with Meridian Chamber. So that's a quick overview of the CARES Act funding in general. And then the Small Business Grant Program, you can see the application funding and the number of applications at the bottom. As an update, we received a total of 65 applications thus far. In fact, I think I saw three more have come in last night. So up around 68. City of Meridian, the staff and the team have approved 37 of those. 17 of them are pending. Of those 37 that Meridian has approved, 25 of those have been approved by the state with 12 of them pending. And really what we're seeing is a little bit of lag time between when the city team looks at an application and approves it and gets it over to the state. The state is also taking some time to review those and approve them as well in alignment with the documentation that we provide. As you can see on the, the bottom right, Meridian has approved roughly $320,000 of that $1 million funding. And the state has approved $218,000 of that amount with about $100,000 in delay between the state's review, just pending review at the state level. So the recommendation before you and the, the discussion point before you is in order to maximize the program allocated funding of $1 million in a timely manner to get these funds to the businesses that need them through the December 30th deadline of the program, recommending that we change the per-grant allocation from $10,000 up to $15,000. And also allow those that have applied once already a chance to reapply for any new expenses that they have incurred since the time of their original application. Generally, for your information, what we're seeing is a lot of the requests are coming for rent and utility expenses. And because it's a reimbursement program, we've seen people apply up through about October's worth of expenses and we suspect that people will still have, businesses will still have a need for reimbursement or expense needs through the calendar year, which the program doesn't afford. And so that's a little bit of the logic as to why we recommend increasing from $10,000 to $15,000 and allow existing businesses that have applied to come back and apply for that additional $5,000. Little bit more information for you. All of the, nearly all of the applications had requested the full $10,000 amount. Through review and examination of the applications, based on the allowable expenses, not all of them qualified for the full $10,000. So some do qualify for the full $10,000, some do not. And that's a little bit of the delta in the, the dollar amounts as well. So maybe I'll stop there with the recommendation that, before you to consider increasing from $10,000 to $15,000 and allow existing applicants as well to reapply and, and open it up for any questions that you might have or discussion.
Council, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, I tracked with you kind of the rationalization behind kind of opening up the second round. I didn't quite hear, maybe I just missed it, the rational, rationalization, excuse me, about increasing it from 10 to, or from 10 to 15,000.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, really what we're seeing is that a lot of the applications, because the program is required to reimburse expenses incurred. In other words, when we started this program back in, I think it was September, late September, early October, businesses could apply for expenses that they incurred up until that point. We would not reimburse them for future expenses through mid-October, November and December. So that $10,000 was mainly attributable for most applications for about three months' worth of rent or $10,000 max. And what we suspect is that there is still a need in the business community for continued coverage if the opportunity is available for those expenses that will occur mid-October, November, December.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
David, thank you so much for your time this evening. I'm wondering about whether the Small Business Grant Program is still ending at the end of December and also what is happening at the state level with an extension of opportunity to apply for these? And is there a, I mean, are applications still permitted in January and February for expenses that were incurred in December or how is that working?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilwoman Perro, those are great questions. From a CARES Act perspective, we have not heard any update on the program being extended beyond December 30th. Now, I know with new administrations at the federal level, there'll be lots of conversations around CARES Act funding and what to do with programs or what new programs may come out. We have not heard that this program will extend beyond December 30th. In fact, the state continues to communicate with us that the applications for CARES Act funding have to be to the state by December 11th with approvals moving forward and then expenditures can happen past the December 30th, but the commitment of funds has to be made before that December 30 deadline. So at this point, there's no indication that it will carry longer. And so I think that addresses your question, but if you've got additional ones.
Council, any additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hogan.
Just a quick comment on the extension. I'm certainly in favor of, of doing that, allowing them to reapply if they, for reimbursement of additional $5,000.
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman Hogan, I didn't catch that question.
Mr. Mayor and Dave, just to comment that, yeah, so I'm, I'm in favor of, of moving forward with allowing those businesses that ask for reimbursement of the $10,000 to also ask for additional five, once those expenses are incurred. It's, this is going on a long time and there's certainly gonna be difficulties in the days ahead as we're experiencing now. So we'll just have to help them out the best we can.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just then, for, for clarification, it's possible that a business, with this is all said and done, with their applications all being successfully approved, that they could receive up to $25,000 total, 10 from the fifth, first round and then 15 in the second?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Cavanagh, no, they would receive a total of 15,000.
Got it.
So yeah, only the, only the delta between what they got and up to 15,000.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, apologies if I wasn't tracking correctly. This, that makes a lot more sense.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Borton.
One quick question, Dave, is the $5,000, did you come to that figure kind of forecasting the number of interested parties and the remaining available funds? Is the 5,000 intended to hopefully exhaust the remaining funds based upon existing demand?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, there is a little bit of that sort of predictive analysis that we did try to use. A lot of it also, we stuck closely to what the state's program had as well as what other communities were doing. So Boise, Napa and Eagle, they all had thresholds up to $15,000 as well. And if we, it's a little difficult to run the numbers because some businesses will qualify for up to the 10,000 or up to the 15,000. Some will only qualify for a few thousand dollars just based on what they're requesting expenses for. But we did look at that. And that's the goal is really to, if the council approved up to a million dollars for the program, try to maximize that full amount for businesses.
Councilman Borton, just to Mr. Miles's point, there was a big debate about early on whether to ask council for 10,000 or 15,000. But we want to try to make sure we open it up to all businesses. So we kept it a little lower on the front end in case we had a lot more than we could handle and it didn't just go, go to those. So this, this was the approach that we thought we would come back with when the timeline was appropriate and the numbers are bearing that out because it's now open to all businesses. There's no restrictions. And we, we've kind of seen where our numbers are right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, Dave. You know, one, one thing I, I think would be great would, would be to with the CARES Act funding in general, you know, show council a, a variety of options to help the community and just kind of keeping various options open for us. I, I'm supportive of the change here. I think it makes a lot of sense to keep helping our businesses. But I think it'd be good for us to continue brainstorming. If there are things that make sense, whether it's, you know, providing disposable masks to larger businesses, particularly grocery stores that aren't handing them out. If there are things we can do with food insecurity, if we have an acute need there. And I know we looked at childcare and we couldn't find a way. But if there was a way, we could look at that. So I, I just appreciate, you know, continuing to stay in front of us with options as the, as the funding may run out.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, we can certainly look, look at that and keep you up to date. And certainly, I extended to you as well, if you have ideas or thoughts that come across your mind, send it our way and we'll, we'll analyze and take a look at it.
Will do.
Council, I've heard from two that they're in favor of moving it forward. I've got three, four. Okay, we will make, make those modifications and share it with those who've applied and generally and make that update. Thank you. Mr. Miles, anything else on this topic?
That's it. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So with that, we are to item 28 on the agenda. Councilmember.
All right, Dean. Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session per ID code 74-206A1A, 74-2061A and 74-2061F.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion second to go into executive session. Is there a discussion? If not, call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Perro.
Hi.
Schrader.
Hi.
Hogan.
Hi.
Burnt. All right, so we're adjourned to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you and the council, we'll probably cover the other items, non-union, and then we'll try to do all the union at the end of the meeting. and then we'll try to do all the union at the end of the meeting because that's a much longer discussion.
Okay.
Hello, Pastor. Hello, Pastor. You're, you're muted right now. They're in executive session, so they should be out shortly and we'll get started right around six.
Make sure, okay, I'm unmuted right now.
You are, sir. You sure are.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chris, can you hear me in the chambers?
Sure can. Thanks Joe.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Alan, I'm gonna stop your video until we get through the proclamation and everything.
Good thing, Chris. I was just double checking to make sure everything's working.
Can you repeat that? I could hardly hear you.
I said, I was just making sure everything was working.
Sounds good. I like the map behind you too. It looks nice.
Can you hear me okay over the speaker?
I can, yep.
Okay, otherwise I can use my computer audio, but I've got a little Bluetooth speaker set up here. I thought maybe it would work better.
Yeah, that sounds good. As long as you're, you know, talking loudly, it sounded great.
Yeah, I love that map. Came from Ikea. Thing has been awesome.
Nice.
Alright, I'm logging off here. So are you gonna run the presentation or am I sharing my screen?
You're sharing your screen.
Okay.
Hi Autumn, if you can hear me, I see that you're here. And when we get to the resolution, I will unmute you, so you'll have the ability to speak if you choose when the mayor reads that resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Mayor.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Councilman Burton.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Counsel, I'll call this meeting to order for the record. It is November seventeenth, twenty twenty, at six oh two PM. I will begin tonight's meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is a communion invocation, which will be given this evening by Pastor Tim Pucey with the Valley Shepherd Church of Nazarene. Mr. Pucey, if you would take this time, and for those in the audience who are watching online, if you'd like to join us in this invocation or take this moment of silence.
Thank you. Good evening. Let's pray. Father, as we approach this Thanksgiving week, we recognize how much we have for which to be grateful. And so we take this moment to count our blessings. We thank you, Lord, for this wonderful city in which we live, and the many ways in which you've blessed us. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor and for our city council, and those who are serving our community in this way. And the many, Lord, who serve our community in supportive ways. Those who are first responders, Lord, continue to watch over this wonderful community, but we thank you for it, Lord. And we thank you for the wonderful, the many wonderful people who are part of this community. And as this council meets tonight, they really represent the people of our community. And, Lord, we recognize the many good people who care about others and are attentive to their needs, and we thank you for it. We also recognize that we are a community in a world with great need right now, particularly as it relates to the pandemic. And, Lord, we would just ask for your healing. We pray for our schools and all of our children in the community, and the way in which they're being impacted by this. We pray for businesses that are hurting in the midst of it. And we just ask, Lord, that you bring healing to our land and healing around the globe. Father, teach us to be responsive to the needs of people around us. And please give wisdom and guidance to our council tonight as they meet. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
So our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I know that we're only going to deliberate on two different items in the executive session. Does that portion need to be amended right now? Or can we just take care of that when we get to the executive session portion?
At the time of the executive session.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Mayor, I second the motion.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it. And the agenda is adopted. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone signed up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did. Garrett Blackner.
Mr. Blackner, if you'd like to come forward, and we got the podium turned around, but I think, can you? Garrett, you're recognized for three minutes.
Hello. My name is Garrett Blackner, and I live in Meridian. I'm a transplant, as many are in this area. I moved here for a chance of freedom and prosperity. I appreciate that I have not seen a mask mandate issued by this city council. I do not agree with the mask mandates. And I don't think they're as effective as claimed. If they were, there would be a slowing down of the RONA, not an increase. I believe we all have our own interests at heart, and I trust that if people are sick, they'll stay home and they'll keep their kids at home. Please do not make laws and ordinance that force this upon people. I am happy that our governor did not impose this on the state. And I do know that I've seen mask mandates come up in other city councils across the state. These were tabled due to the number of people that did not want that. But I also, I cannot tell you how happy I am to be part of this state, especially when I see what's happening in the state I grew up in. It's almost a bad joke what that state's imposing over there. I really want to keep Idaho free and will support people and officials with this endeavor. I just wanted to speak my mind and say thank you.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you very much.
Next item is a proclamation, and then we'll put down the podium. Just come on this side, that way at least the camera can see everybody. So council, we're happy tonight to be recognizing the Rocky Mountain Girls Soccer Team, three-time defending state champions. And I'm joined here this evening by their coaches as we do a proclamation. I don't know if their team is gonna be watching tonight, but if not, I'm sure it'll be part of required viewing of the city council meeting at a future date. But we're just excited that we did get an opportunity to have some of our fall athletics take place this year. As we want to take this moment to recognize a team from Rocky, and hopefully maybe next week, we can recognize another team from Rocky, depending upon the outcome of the state football championship. As someone that lives on the south side, I'll just say absolutely. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and read a proclamation, and then turn this over to the coaches for some remarks. But whereas being a Rocky Mountain soccer player is more than scoring points, making assists, throwing the ball, and achieving a state title. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience, all traits needed to succeed on the field, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the Rocky Mountain Girls Soccer Team never backed down from familiar opponents and took home the Idaho Class 5A Girls State Soccer Championship Tournament Trophy against Boise. And whereas for the 2019-2020 season, the Grizzly Girls Soccer Team has secured their place in history by taking home an unprecedented third state championship in Iowa's largest classification. And whereas the capturing of the state title builds school spirit and allows these student athletes to walk the halls of Rocky Mountain with a little extra swagger. And whereas the leadership, training, and discipline of the coaches help team members to focus their talents and passion to become a women's team, with each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simison, hereby proclaim November seventeenth, twenty twenty, as Rocky Mountain Girls Soccer State Champions Day. And the city of Meridian call upon the community to join me in congratulating the Grizzlies on their remarkable athletic achievement and representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament, dated this seventeenth of November, twenty twenty. And as we normally do, we do have a second proclamation that has all the members of the coaching staff and the girls that is also included in this. And they will be part of the ongoing city Meridian record, so that if they ever want to come back after viewing this, they can always find it in the minute books. We also have pins that we like to present, so I'm gonna turn this over to, I don't know which coach would like to make comments. Donald?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let you go and take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council, and the city of Meridian for the proclamation. And the, I would also, I would also like to especially thank the team, on behalf of the team, who could not be here. The hard work that was put in and all of the problems that we had to address during this, during the COVID crisis and during the air quality issues and even snow up in Coeur d'Alene. We're very happy to have gotten through the season and extremely happy that the season went this way. So again, I'd like to thank everyone on behalf of the team that I hope are watching this at this time. Thank you very much.
What about the athlete? Does she wanna talk? Good job, guys. That's your soccer plays. I was about ready to send those to Meridian or Mountain View or something.
Thank you, council, for that indulgence. And again, to those from Rocky maybe watching, congratulations. Appreciate the parents' help. I'm sure this created its own challenges, and good luck to Rocky football this week. Next up is resolution number twenty dash two-two-four-two. A resolution appointing to the city council John Nesmith to seat three, and appointing Albert King to seat four, and Autumn Short to signify the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission. Council, John Nesmith hopefully is not a stranger to any of you all to know why, through his steadfast determination, he is being reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And then we had two other excellent candidates to consider. Autumn and Albert both bring different perspectives from there, and are in different phases of their lives. They're both in South Meridian, one a little bit south, closer to Discovery, and one over near Bear Creek, which actually helps give us a good geographic distribution to the overall commission. From that standpoint, Albert has younger children and families, and definitely has a, you know, it's always an interesting conversation when you talk to somebody that lives within walking distance of what would be a fairly significant park in Bear Creek, but chooses to get in their car and drive to Discovery. You know, I think it talks about the needs and viewpoints of our residents, and having that type of perspective about what would keep someone from, you know, making that drive for their children. So what type of improvements are valuable at not necessarily our regional, but all of our parks from that perspective. And then, you know, Autumn is someone that just really wants to get engaged and get involved. She was looking for a place. She's all about community, and I'm not saying Albert's not, but she really focused on the desire and understanding of community and giving She's all about community and I'm not saying Albert's not, but she really focused on the desire and understanding of community and giving back. And after spending time growing up in Canyon County, she's been here for several years and has made Meridian her home and is dedicated to towards getting involved. So I was happy to be joined by the current Parks and Rec Chair in these interviews and concurred about the value and benefit of both of these individuals will bring. And so with that, I'd be happy to take any questions about these appointments.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Holdon.
If we don't have any questions, as, as the council leaves on to the Parks Department, I, I'm, am happy to bring this forth for council consideration. You know, at our last council meeting, we honored Craig Steele, who retired from Parks Commission after 20 years. But that doesn't mean the Parks Commission was left without a lot of experience. As you mentioned, John Nesmith, the local businessman has been serving, I believe it's 10 years on the Parks Commission. So he's only got 10 more to catch Craig's right now. But we appreciate that, that level of commitment and great things have been happening. And with the two new appointments that are happening, I think we're in good hands for our Parks Commission as they work to make our community parks even better and find new parks. And so, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 20 dash 2242. Appoint, reappointing John Nesmith to seat three and appointing Albert Kang to seat four and Autumn Short to seat five of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission.
I have a motion, a second to adopt resolution number 20 dash 2242. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I don't have a discussion for the motion, but I just want to say that, I just want to say welcome and I look forward to getting to know you. I will be the liaison hopefully next year for parks. And so please always feel free to reach out to me and I really hope that, that, that we can get to know one another and have a great year next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If there's no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? You guys have it? Resolution is agreed, is agreed to and they are appointed. I know we do have Autumn on the line. I don't know if she would like to make any comments at this point in time. She's on the phone. Mr. Cork, is it star seven?
She just needs to unmute. It is star nine, I believe.
Autumn, if you would like to make any comments, would be love to take any comments you have at this time.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much. I look forward to working with the city council and my fellow commissioners on Parks and Rec. And I am excited to serve the city of Meridian and our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Autumn. We appreciate you. Okay, moving on to our action items for this evening. Our first item is a public hearing to consider adoption of the following codes or local amendments thereto. I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn this over to Ms. Freckleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For some reason, video doesn't seem to be working, but good evening, mayor and council. Tonight before you is, is our adoption of the new 2018 International Building Code, the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the 2018 Residential Code, the 18 Existing Building Code, the 18 Energy Conservation Code, the 2018 Fire Code, the 2018 International Mechanical Code, the 2018 Fuel and Gas Code, the 2017 Uniform Plumbing Code and the 2017 National Electrical Code. We were before you last month with just an introduction that these were coming. The ordinance is also on the agenda tonight for the first reading. Just as a reminder, the state of Idaho adopts the codes for the state of Idaho. And they do that through a, what is called a code collaborative. And that is a statewide group of building officials and other building folks that get together to consider the codes as written, make certain changes to those codes. And then they forward their final proposal to the legislature for final adoption. That was done this last legislative session. And statutorily, local jurisdictions then have one year following the adoption by the state to adopt the codes as written by the state. We do have the opportunity to do local amendments to the codes. These can be more restrictive, however, they cannot be any less restrictive than the adopted state code. The local amendments that we propose are basically to bring some clarity to certain items that are Meridian specific, such as our own fee schedules versus going with the fee schedules that are in the, in the codes. That, that sort of thing. So really in a nutshell, that's, that's what we have before you tonight for your consideration and public hearing and first reading and ordinance. I will stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Freckleton. Council, any questions for staff at this time? Okay. This is a public hearing. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up for this.
Okay. If there's anybody who is on the call that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you could please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of Zoom or press star nine on your phone. Looks like we only have two people that aren't currently in the meeting that, or if there's anyone present who'd like to provide testimony.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Just a quick question for Bruce. Bruce, is there any, any intentional outreach that we do for a public hearing tonight with our building community and the folks that you communicate with about the proposed changes that even though there's public notice and everyone should know, but we, we might provide more direct notice just to give them a chance to send a letter or ask a question. And if they don't, that's fine. But if they, if they do, then we'd love to hear from them.
Very, very good question, Councilman Borden. Statutorily, there is a list of, I believe it's like 13 different agencies that we have to provide notice to. That notification did go out. We also approached the Building Contractors Association through the monthly forum and we made our presentation there as well. So we have, we have broadcasted pretty widely. You know, like I say, all, all the other local jurisdictions are doing the same thing. So that's, that was our efforts.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Freckleton, I assume because we're really not deviating from what the state has already adopted, that this is pretty much non-controversial from the building community, at least from a practical standpoint.
That is correct.
Seeing no one else wishing to testify or questions, do I have a motion from council? To close the public hearing, that is. Councilman Holdon.
I move that we close the public hearing on the adoption of a lengthy list of codes. Do I need to read that, Mr. Nary? Okay. I move that we close the public hearing on action item number two on the adoption of codes and amendments to the codes.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I'll second that motion.
I have motion as second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it? Public hearing is closed and we'll take that up during the ordinance section later this evening. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Union 93 Vacation Right-of-Way, H 2020 dash 0103. And I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn this over to Alan.
There we go. Everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Kevin, I was having a hard time finding a little stupid mute button. I had so many things up on my screen. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, the members of the council. Can everybody see my PowerPoint presentation? Terrific. See hands nodding. This is a vacation of right-of-way for several residual parcels that were associated with the Union 90, well, the Meridian Station development. You can see this is Pine here. This is Meridian. So this is City Hall. This is just right to the east of you. Here are the railroad tracks. A little history on this. So the applicant requests approval to vacate again about a half an acre of platted right-of-way. So this was historically platted right-of-way. It was planted in the late 1800s, 1890. This vacation of right-of-way, it was a condition of approval of the Meridian Station conditional use. The Meridian Station or the two towers to the east, they are 100 feet tall. In order to be to that height, they had to go through a conditional use. The town, the proposed towers, they straddle this platted right-of-way. Basically, it doesn't make any sense. It just kind of approaches onto the lot. As required, the applicant submitted letters from potential easement holders, which would be Idaho Power and Intermountain Gas. They've agreed to that, although Idaho Power has, has responded that they've maintained electrical facilities around this area. They haven't said exactly where it is, but they've mentioned that they, they maintain all existing rights to operate these. Staff is recommending obviously that the applicant work with Idaho Power and ACHD during the relocation of these lines to make sure we don't have any issues. Per C ACHD's request, the applicant is dedicating additional right-of-way along North Main and East Broadway. So the, the right-of-way that approaches onto the lot is going away. And in exchange, they are dedicating additional new right-of-way. And I'm a very visual person, so just to kind of give you an idea of what this is on the left, what you see in red hatched there, that is the areas of platted right-of-way that lay on the lot. Again, City Hall is just to the left or to the west. The slide on the east shows the Meridian Station development. The, the two buildings that you see there, they're shown in blue with the hatched, those are laying on the existing right-of-way. And as a concession, again, the applicant will be dedicating right-of-way along East Broadway and Main Street here. ACHD ultimately approves vacations of right-of-way, but for them to act on the request, they must get a recommendation of approval from the city council. And with that, staff recommends if the council approved this subject vacation application.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions for Alan at this time? With the applicant, I'd like to make comments.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Mike.
Hi, Mike Chittister with the Glean Opportunity Fund, 7174 South Angel Way here in Meridian. Yeah, I don't have too much to add. Thanks first of all for hearing this vacation request. Don't have too much to add other than what has been spoken about already. I, I would, you know, it's just historically platted right-of-way that ACHD doesn't need and we will need for, for the Union 93 development. I will just, as indicated, Idaho Power had said they do have some facilities in that area and I can shed a little bit of light on the details there. There through, you saw those three areas north to south that are where the right-of-way is located. In that center section, there's an underground power line that went to, that currently goes to one of the existing buildings that will be demolished. And so obviously as part of our demo and preparation of the site, we'll go ahead and, and, and just continue that line. And obviously we'll work with Idaho Power and any other issues that, that we have. But otherwise, I don't have too much else to, to add to the staff report. And I appreciate your hearing this and, and I'll open any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Council, any questions for the applicant? This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that like provide testimony on this application, if you'd like to come forward at this time to do so. Seeing no one coming forward and no one online at this time to provide testimony. Would the applicant like to make any final comments or stand on what they've already stated?
No further comments. Thank you.
Council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I move we close the public hearing on item H 2020 0103.
Mr. Mayor, second motion. I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? You guys have it?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilboard.
I think Alan's staff report explained the justification for the application and its approval very well. And the applicant supported that as well. So I see no reason not to go forward with this. And I will make a motion to approve H 2020 0103, the right-of-way vacation as requested.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item H 2020 dash 0103. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Cork, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Gavin.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Oglan.
Aye.
Burn.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Tequid Place Subdivision, H 2020 dash 006. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments. I'll turn this over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, good. I'm too loud, let me know. My wife says my voice carries since it's so deep. I stated this is the public hearing for Tequid Place, H 2020 dash 0006. Application before use for annexation and zoning and preliminary plat. The site consists of 7.35 acres of land currently zoned RUT in the county and is specifically located at 1835 East Victory Road. To the north of it is existing city of Meridian, R8 zoning and to the west as well. To the east is RUT zoning and to the south is city Meridian R4 zoning. Comprehensibility plan designation on this property is medium density residential, as is the same for every site adjacent to it. Okay. There we go. The request for annexation is for 7.35 acres of land with a request for R8 zoning to match that to the north and the west. And a preliminary plat consisting of 22 building lots and four common lots. One of the 22 building lots contains the existing home that is to remain. Future land use as stated is medium density residential, which allows detached single-family homes and requires the gross, gross density reside between three to eight dwelling units per acre. The applicant's revised plat has a gross density of 2.99 dwellings per acre, which is rounded up to three and therefore complies with the common. As noted, there is an existing home on the subject site that is intended to remain or reside on its own lot within the subdivision. In addition, some of the existing accessory structures on the property are proposed to remain as well. Current access to the property is via driveway connected to East Victory Road and the applicant is now agreeing to close this access and comply with the UDC. In, in line with this, the current residents will take access internally and via a driveway connection to the new local street, East Fathom Street. The driveway will be right here. You guys can see my pointer, near the end of the curve coming into the site. For reference, north is to the left of the screen. The applicant is also proposing to construct an emergency only access that connects to the proposed East, East Fathom Street to Victory Road, which is right along their western boundary here. Staff is recommending a condition of approval that this emergency access be constructed prior to any issuances, any issuance of certain occupancy. And it's also required to make this subdivision and the adjacent subdivision to the west, trade win subdivision, comply with the emergency access. Parking for the development is required to be provided in accordance with the standards listed in UDC 113C dash six for detached single-family homes based on the number of bedrooms per home. The proposed street sections are 33 feet wide with five-foot attached sidewalks and will also offer on-street parking where there are no fire hydrants or driveways. on-street parking where there are no fire hydrants or driveways. In addition, the applicant has proposed a cul-de-sac with a 57-foot radius, which is nine feet wider than the standard requirement of 48 feet, therefore allowing on-street parking along the perimeter of the cul-de-sac. In most cases, a five-foot-wide detached sidewalk is required to be constructed with the required frontage improvements along Victory Road. However, because there is no sidewalk adjacent to the site on either side, and the section of sidewalk is less than 300 feet, code allows for the sidewalk to be attached. The applicant has proposed to construct a seven-foot attached sidewalk in line with ACHD requirement, in line with ACHD requirements. The sidewalk should be constructed within the required 25-foot landscape buffer along Victory Road. 25-foot wide easement is depicted on the plat, and per UDC, staff is giving the applicant the option of placing the buffer within an easement as shown, or they can choose to revise the plat and add a common lot. As of now, I believe that they are going to be using it as an easement, which is allowed for UDC. These middle landscape plans do not show the correct amount. I apologize. They now show the correct amount of vegetative ground cover and the existing trees that are to remain. Staff, without a previous condition of approval, it has now been stricken because of this, or should be stricken because they supplied me these plans following publishing of the commission recommendations. Based on the proposed plat of 7.35 acres, a minimum of 0.74 acres of common open space should be provided. According to the open source exhibit, the applicant is proposing approximately 37,842 square feet of qualified open space, which is 11.82%. The open space consists of common lots and half of the landscape buffer to Victory Road. The largest area of open space is located at the southern end of the development and is more than 20,000 square feet in size. To the north and across the cul-de-sac is the next largest open space lot that also contains the proposed amenity, endless water feature with available seating surrounding it. This open space lot also has a micro path that continues north to the temporary cul-de-sac on the new east-west street in the center of the project, adding another pedestrian connection to the project. The applicant has submitted sample elevation of the proposed homes for this project. The single-family homes are depicted as mostly single-story structures with a variety of finished materials with stone, stucco, and lap siding combinations. Some homes do depict extra-large spaces for at-home RV storage as well. All single-family homes appear to meet design and architectural standards. One of the recommendations or, I guess, requests from the commission were to provide updated elevations. The applicant has not done that, stating that these home elevations are accurate. There was a number of written testimony originally. Since then, additional written testimony, two pieces have come in, those stating the same issues as before, specifically regarding irrigation that might run along Victory Road that might be disturbed by this development. I'm not entirely sure what they are referencing in that other than the creek that abuts the property, which will not be disturbed because this property does not, the creek is on this property. Second to that, they are worried that, I should say, there's irrigation ditches that have been piped already because of previous ACHD work in right-of-way. Those will not be disturbed with this project. Another issue that was brought up was concerns over a duplicate name subdivision. I'm honestly not sure what that's about. I have had discussions with this gentleman. I believe at some point there was a mistake on the noticing for this and placed this at a different location in the city about a mile to the east, and that is why we had to originally continue this because that was a mistake on staff's part. So that should be of no concern. The other concern that has been brought up both by commission and some of the neighbors to the west is regarding the high groundwater out here. I did get an updated report from the applicant regarding the groundwater and it is higher than previously determined. The, I'm not an engineer, so I cannot fully speak to what that should entail. Mr. Freckleton is here and has stated that he would be more than willing to answer the questions, and also the applicant's representative tonight is the project engineer, and he should be able to answer any questions regarding that as well. The only outstanding issue for city council regarding the application is likely the groundwater. And then the applicant did not provide the updated elevations per the request of the commission. The commission did recommend approval of the project, and after that, I will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Mr. Strater.
Yes, thank you, Joe and Bruce for presenting everything. I think the groundwater is a concern, and I wanted to try to understand the context for it. I did read the report that said there were clay, you know, is there is clay in the soils and a lot of look like sand and gravel. And so if we have high water, I guess my first question is, are we requiring the slab foundation construction and does that solve that issue? And then I guess my second question may be more of a question for Mr. Nary. If this project moves forward and the soils and the groundwater are not conductive and homeowners' homes are getting flooded, you know, what liability, if any, does the city have to deal with that?
Thank you, Counsel, Mr. Strater. I can't answer your second question, obviously. The first question, Bruce might be able to get into the specifics, but when I did receive this report and the new updated letter from their engineering firm that did the testing, I sent it to Bruce. Bruce updated his condition, which is recommending that they build slab-on-grade construction rather than doing the traditional crawl spaces here to help avoid some of this flooding issue that could arise. Again, it is a recommendation. I am not, at the time, I cannot add that condition because it was already passed the commission hearing. If counsel would like to make that a new condition, you guys are more than willing to do that. Again, I'm not an engineer, so I can't specifically speak to the differences between the two reports other than to say that they did mention in the report that a different type of stormwater irrigation basically is going to have to take place on-site rather than having the seepage beds that may likely be above ground for portions of the year, as is the case in the subdivision to the west, which was of concern to the subdivision to the west because theirs, from my understanding, were not built, I guess, 100% correctly, and so they do not percolate as well as they should. So that's the best I could do on those questions for you, man.
That's what Mr. Strater. And counsel, the Geotech report, as Joe mentioned, it did confirm, the update that they sent in did confirm the presence of perched groundwater. Basically, what that means is that there is a layer below the surface that does contain clay. They talked about it. It was sand and gravel, but clay finds. And it basically creates a layer that the water has difficulty penetrating. And so you get a buildup of groundwater on top of that layer. The Geotech report does talk about some very specific construction considerations for dealing with that, that cemented layer, and they also talk about that that traditional crawl space foundation as well as a slab-on-grade foundation will work in the subdivision. However, they do, they do recommend a slab-on-grade to avoid the potential of groundwater intrusion into the crawl spaces. We have seen high groundwater in a lot of places in Meridian, and I know a lot of folks have have unfortunately had to deal with that, and it seems to me that a slab-on-grade would be a very good alternative way to go to avoid the possibility of groundwater. So I know the design engineer is here tonight to and potentially could, could address this, you know, as far as what they plan on doing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Strater, to answer your question.
Generally, the city is not responsible or liable for construction of this type, if it's built improperly or if it's built in a way that is not as effective a tool. We have, the city has required slab-on-grade construction in certain subdivisions because of high groundwater. We certainly get the calls and we certainly get complaints. The responsibility ultimately is still the builder, the developer, and the architect and engineer who stamps those plans. So they're the ones that are asserting that the house can be built in that, in that location properly and safely, not the city. So we don't necessarily have the liability, but we certainly deal with the unhappy members of the public that end up with these homes that are not built properly or not built for the conditions that they're located, so.
Thank you.
Joe, a question for you. The sidewalk that's being attached, do we know what is being proposed with the roundabout? Is it, I know, I don't know if this recommendation is within mind what the roundabout will be built as? Or just because the roundabout's not built yet?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, because this is so far away, yeah, there's also a little, I guess, I'm trying to find the right map to show. I guess you can kind of see it here. There's an RUT parcel between, so along the trade winds subdivision, there is some detached sidewalk, and then it stops, I don't know, again, this was before my time here. They were allowed to remain not part of the city, or maybe they weren't a part of this parcel originally, but they don't have any sidewalk here, and then there's no sidewalk along the other side of it. So our code does allow for the applicability in this case because it's such a short frontage that they can do attached for this section, and then as the RUT person to the west comes in, maybe in the future, they would probably have to have detached and then connect across the emergency access there. I don't believe it has anything to do with the roundabout in this case, other than ACHD has acquired the right-of-way for that, from my understanding. They just have not yet done the construction, obviously.
I guess, yeah, my question, and maybe you don't have the answers. It's my understanding that what's built there in that location right now is temporary. I could be wrong, but it's not a sidewalk. It's just blacktop. Blacktop asphalt in that area?
Yes, sir. That is correct. I apologize. Yes.
So that's why I was, didn't know if, what would be intended? Because quite frankly, this will remain a sidewalk to nowhere till both of them are done. And if the rest of it is going to be detached, and that's what's envisioned, if it's not going to be useful sidewalk, why would we not want it detached? Just because we put it up to the curb doesn't make it more useful if it can't go anywhere.
Understood, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, this was intended to be an actual sidewalk. My understanding is that Victory Road from this point is widened to its full extent as of right now with ACHD's plans. So it would be, at least in front of this property, it would be fine. And that ACHD map here, north of Victory on Locust Grove, that's to be widened. And then obviously, in most cases, surrounding the immediate roundabout gets widened a little bit, but all over here. So this would function as a real sidewalk, concrete, not asphalt, but yes, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere for the foreseeable future.
I guess my, my question is, when they redo the roundabout, what is going to happen in front of trade winds? Are they going to have an attached sidewalk or detached sidewalk? Do we have any idea? That's what I'm really trying to get at is, to me, it makes most more sense if detached is what we prefer, and that's going to be detached, can they leave it in a detached place on their property until the other stuff develops and attaches it, or does that not meet people's expectations because there's nothing that is connecting to?
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the specific answers. I don't have the construction plans for the right-of-way or the roundabout. I apologize. I don't know. In most cases, for other roundabout plans that I have seen, they have been attached adjacent to the roundabout, and then later on down the road, they become detached with our other subdivisions and things like that. However, that happens to play out. So I can't tell you specifically on that. You're correct. I do not have that answer.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, then with that, we'll ask the applicant to come forward. I think that will be Mr. Porter. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. And he'll be recognized for 15 minutes.
Nathan Porter with Levitt Associates Engineers. Address is 1324 First Street South, Nampa, Idaho. And we're grateful to be able to present this to the council. We're very appreciative of the fact that the city council and especially the staff has worked with us on this subdivision, on the issues that continued this. As was mentioned, there have been a couple of updates that we've added to make the subdivision a better fit for the area. As has been mentioned several times, there is a lot of concern about the higher groundwater, which we are taking into account. Stormwater, we will be having, originally, we were planning on storing it underground, but with the higher groundwater, that would get flooded. So we we will be working.
Nathan, you're cutting in and out, sir. Just to let you know.
Oh, okay. So can you, is it working better now? Or is, am I still cutting out?
That's much better.
Okay. So with, with the above ground, as was mentioned, there have been some issues with the ones around it. So we will take special care of designing the system to make sure that it seeps well, that it won't cause any problems for the homes around it. I understand mosquitoes have been an issue for some homeowners potentially with it. And so that will be taken into account, and we will be working with that and with the city for the approval, final approvals on the subdivision. Is there any specific questions or other things you would like answered?
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Hogman.
Question, Mr. Porter. Will the houses then be slab-on-grade instead of the crawl space foundation style?
I know that's the recommendation. We generally don't work specifically with that except for as conditions. But I believe we're working with the developer to figure out whether that is the way they are going to go. I believe we're leaning in that direction, but I don't think a final decision has been made, to my knowledge.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Borden.
As a follow-up to Councilman Hogman's question, if proposed condition of approval be 1.2, which speaks to that exact language, and it is, as written right now in the staff report, it uses recommendation crawl space or slab, but it's nothing definitive. If you were to get direction from this council that says it shall be slab, and that condition of approval is edited to reflect that, do you have any comment or concern if that change is made? To ensure that slab-on-grade is the solution to avoid even the potential of utilizing crawl space, which we've seen to be unfortunately problematic for homeowners for a long, long time in these types of situations?
That wouldn't be an issue. I do not believe on that. I think they would be fine with that if that was a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Joe.
Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify to Mr. Borden's point. I do recommend that if you want to change that condition that you also added as a development agreement provision, just to make sure that we have it covered both in the public works comments and ADA provision, just to be clear.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Mr. Strater.
Thank you. I think you touched on, you know, some
Thank you. I, I think you touched on, you know, some of the concerns about the type of basically runoff or water storage, and some of the surrounding neighbors have had issues, particularly with mosquitoes and et cetera. So could you please be more specific about what steps you would be taking to mitigate those concerns or to give the council comfort that, that that solution is going to be viable?
So what we would work towards is something that, to make sure that we don't end up with stagnant standing water, that tends to be what brings in the mosquitoes. We would probably work towards have, making sure that it would drain within the allotted time for most of stormwaters, which is within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So that water doesn't stand in there. The biggest thing would then be to make sure that it doesn't pool down below like they were mentioning and flood the surrounding areas. And we would be keeping an eye on that and making sure that our system would address all of that. So basically, the, the idea would be to make sure we don't have any standing water for long term. And with the high groundwater, making sure that that doesn't, doesn't cause it to stand for longer than the allotted time.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up for staff. Um, I guess my question to staff would be, are there typically DA provisions or conditions that we attach to approvals? Or things we would normally look for as construction requirements for those storage areas for the water? I'm just not familiar enough with it to know. If they say they're looking at it, that's going to happen, or are there specific things that we look for to mitigate that concern?
Counsel, Mr. Schrader, members of the council, the, there's a couple of things. One, I know that there's going to be some was it BMP type of best manager practices from the public work side of this, this is going to mitigate that as well. And on top of that, we do have code. In the UDC, we do have code relating to the requirements for this. And part of that is the twenty-four to forty-eight hour requirement. Most often, that in order for it to, wherever it's located, in order for that area to count as open space, and it needs to be in that large open space lot in the south, which with the topography makes the most sense as well. All those things should be handled with code. I don't think that there's a specific construction requirement we need to put in. If there is, I would lean on Bruce's expertise with that and his team. But I'm not aware that we have done that.
Counselwoman Schrader, members of the council. The Geotech report, on page six of the Geotech report, does have some, some recommendations for the design of the stormwater system. As the applicant had mentioned. This is to, he is recommending that it be a detention drainage facility. So it's not a retention. Retention ponds are ones where the water will stand in them. This is a detention pond where the water would need to be able to percolate into the soils within a twelve-hour period of time. They do address the, the cemented layer that I had mentioned earlier, you know, that has been perking or purching the water table. The recommendation here is that that where the detention drainage facility is, they need to be able to penetrate that perch layer so that the water can then perk down through into the lower soils. I know that is something that the Ada County Highway District is going to be very concerned about as well. So, you know, what I was trying to get at with my condition in the staff report is they need to really be paying attention to this hydro, this Geotech report and the design considerations that are in it. And as they go through their design, to make sure that everything is going to function properly.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick ones to touch on a couple of the things that were raised. One for the applicant is to Mr. Porter. It's noted that applicant has not provided updated elevations per request of the commission. Sounds like if you can respond to that. And also just to address irrigation concerns that run along Victory Road being disturbed or any other disturbance. Another concern was anything that irrigation that traverses the site for adjacent subdivisions.
For the houses. The idea for, that my, is that these are what the houses would generally look like. They will be instances where they will have to be a little bit smaller, where the third car garage will not fit on the lots, and so they will be adjusted for that. And the idea was this was for roof design and the front appearance of the homes that they plan to that they plan to use for that. And so if we need to, you know, supply a little bit different, that would be fine. But this is basically what they're hoping for the houses to look like. As for the irrigation issues. We will be making sure that there aren't any problems with additional, with irrigation around for other subdivisions. From what we've seen so far, there shouldn't be anything that we have to do, but we won't be disturbing other people's irrigation.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Counsel, anything further for the applicant? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to provide testimony on this item? Mr. Parker, I assume we did not have anyone sign up?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up online or in person, and no one is online.
Or in the room. So without, I'll turn this over to the applicant for any final remarks.
I'd just like to say thank you for listening to this, and we will be taking a very close look at the drainage of the stormwater to make sure that it works as needed and in conjunction with the geotechnical report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more. I guess I'd, I'd like the applicant's feedback on, you know, having a five-foot detached sidewalk. I, I realize that there appears to be sort of a loophole or sort of an exception to what we normally require. And this is our standard. It's what we intend for the city. And we've all decided, I think that that's what we need. And I guess I'd like the applicant's feedback on whether that's doable, or if there's some other reason that that's not possible.
So my understanding is that was part of the original plans. We can certainly look at what would maybe need to be. I think that was part of before they were closing the entrance to the property on Victory Lane. If that is a condition, we can certainly look into that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you, sir. Counselwoman Schrader, members of the council, a little more background on that. Thank you, Nathan, for that. Part of it is related to the applicant's not originally wanting to close their access, but more than that, they also have quite a few, I guess, really older, nicer trees that are part of this landscape buffer. And my understanding is that there's not a lot of room to put a detached sidewalk within that area in the required landscape. Could they make it work? Absolutely. Obviously, they, they can make their requirements work and and move some trees, remove them, mitigate them, and put a detached sidewalk. That was part of staff's, I guess, throwing them a bone, so to speak, of understanding that there is this provision in code that allows this section to be attached. If council so wishes it to be detached for future use to the east and west, then I, I understand that as well. But to the Mr. Mayor's other point regarding that, it will be a sidewalk to nowhere, no matter where there it's attached or detached, probably for quite a few years. Mrs. DeChambeau to the east has not shown any interest in redeveloping, and the owner to the west of the site is in their nice little pocket. So I, there'd be no telling when they would want to redevelop and continue the sidewalk onto the western, into the roundabout.
Counsel, at least from my perspective, if possible. It would be nice if there could be an option that they could look at whatever is planned for the roundabout and see what makes sense. You know, to me, it's about how do you make the connect, connection, and I'm hopeful that the roundabout when built actually creates the sidewalk in front of the county parcel right there that may not ever redevelop. I don't know, obviously, how far they plan to go. And if that's the case, if they can make that connection and needs to be attached, it makes a lot of sense to do that. But if the ACHD's intention to leave that vacant and not attach it. But it'd be nice if there was at least ability to look at it to what, see what makes sense when that's put in.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you for that. I, I understand your points, sir. And if council wants to add a condition for that, I would recommend that be, just be a condition that way I can add it to the landscape plan conditions and not a DA provision. I don't know if that's necessary for that, but just a regular condition of approval.
Counsel, any further comments, questions, or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Borton.
Just to close the loop, a question to Bruce. You know, these are the only times that we have to ensure conditions of approval and DA conditions really provide the certainty necessary. And and do you feel like the the conditions, even as proposed to be amended in this discussion, adequately provide the, that type of certainty? Just to ensure that, that we're not missing a chance to correct a, correctable problem or avoid a problem with this groundwater issue? Anything, anything left unresolved in your eyes coming from this discussion?
Counselman Borton, Mayor, members of the council, I, you know, I think that if you place a requirement for slab on grade, I think that, that eliminates the concern of, you know, any flooding and crawl spaces. I think that would be a good solution. You know, we have had lots of these, as you know, and, and I think that insurance would be, would be very good. The only other thing I could think of with regard to the stormwater system. And obviously, this is going to have to be worked out with Ada County Highway District, but if we place the condition per the Geotech recommendation that the stormwater drains out, is, it perks into the soil within a twelve-hour period of time. I think that would mitigate the concern for, you know, standing water and mosquito problems and, and that sort of thing. I think that would be very helpful. That water needs to make it through that, through that cemented layer to be able to drain out properly. And so I think, I think those two things, Counselman Borton, would be, it would sure give me a, a lot more peace of mind that we can avoid problems here.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Borton.
You can, I can't, I can't see the applicant. You can, but, but in fairness, the question would go back in light of what Bruce has referenced as a recommendation. And then we talked about the, the slab on grade requirement, which the applicant said they'd be willing to to have that condition, one point to simply require it. But also, but with regards to the stormwater system and the twelve-hour perk standards from the Geotech recommendation, if that is a condition in the DA, any concerns from the applicant on that inclusion as well?
No, there, we don't have any problems with the perk or going through the limiting layer down below.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Borton.
If there's not additional, if there's not additional questions of the applicant or of staff. It didn't sound like there is. I'll make a motion and get some discussion started at least. First start with moving to close the public hearing on item five H twenty twenty zero 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 six.
I have a motion, second, to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, also in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Those name, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Borton.
Just to kick off some discussion and see where council's at. I think this relatively small project. Think it's a good one. It does seem to fit. I think the questions and the, the painful attention to groundwater is well taken. I appreciate Bruce's direction. As well as the applicant's willingness to provide certainty in the conditions of approval and in the DA as represented in today's hearing. If there's an approval to go forward, I think it should certainly include that change to the condition one point two, to address the requirement for slab on grade, no crawl spaces, as well as what Bruce referenced with regards to the stormwater system, the perk requirement from the Geotech recommendation, that those also be mandatory conditions as well. As well as included in the DA. So I'm, those two sort of caught my focus in prep for this hearing and in this discussion. So if, if, if it does go forward, those conditions should certainly be included. But I know there was other discussion about sidewalks and other things that council wants to comment on those two.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, hold on.
Yeah, I like, Counselman Borton, I, I agree on the slab on grade and, and another requirement requiring stormwater drainage within, in the twelve-hour period of time. I think those are issues that will save everybody a lot of headache down the road, both from the city and developer standpoint. The landscape condition plan I'm intrigued by, where it sounded like that we put a condition that, when it comes to the approval of the landscape plan, that at that point in time, they could determine the ability to have a detached sidewalk instead of an attached sidewalk during that review. Did I understand that correctly for the, for that particular issue, that there is that point in time? And Joe, maybe that's something you can weigh in on, is, is that how that would work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogman. I think there's a way to write the condition there. Yeah, I think if you stated it at the time of final plasametal with that landscape plan to work with staff. final plat submittal with that landscape plan to work with staff to determine whether or not that is going to be detached or attached, like Mr. Mayor said, to have that option, I think that would work just fine. I'm not going to fall on the sword for either. I think that either one will work in the long run. Final plat will take a little bit for them to get all their engineering set up and everything. So between now and then, I can absolutely work with ACHD and get the, the plans for the roundabout, or at least what they're planning, and better determine where that sidewalk should be located. And this applicant has been very willing to work with me since the original snafus. So I think that as long as you word the condition to give us the option, we should be great to work that out at the final plat stage.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just more comment on that. Yeah, that, it is intriguing to do something like that because to, to determine something right now, and we really don't have all the answers, I think would give it, give the flexibility to pick the best option when the time comes. So I kind of like adding that into the, into the conditions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I'm in agreement with my fellow counsel so far. I, I do think that the, the slab and the 12-hour perk Geotech recommendations make sense. I would like to have that condition about the sidewalk as well. I also think we should just always, you know, really try, try to hold ourselves to the standard that we want for the long term, right? And that, to me, means if, if we have the ability to connect a detached sidewalk, that that's what we should do. We don't know when these other properties will develop, but I think we, you know, need to hold our standards high and keep holding them there. Yep, that's it for me. I really appreciate also the applicant's willingness to work with staff and go through the process. You know, I know there are a lot of changes and the changes cost, you know, it's costly, but we appreciate them, you know, being a partner and helping to build a, you know, very high-quality community.
Hearing nothing else, does anyone like to make a motion based on that feedback?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I apologize, I might not have tracked if Councilman Strater's comments with regards to the sidewalk, is that are you, is it additional comment on the, the general landscape condition, the final plat submittal that Joe was just talking about, or is it a fourth thing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
No, I, I'm agreeing with, I think, staff's recommendation to make it a final plat condition. That felt like it would give us the optionality needed, that we could require that at that time, if it makes sense.
Okay. Makes sense. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I don't know if there's additional discussion from counsel, but I'll, I'll make a motion and see where it goes. The move that we approve item five H 2020 0006 as presented in the staff report of November 17th, 2020, and to include the additional conditions of approval, or modified conditions of approval as the case may be, and, and DA provisions that will account for the requirement of slab-on-grade construction without a crawl space, the stormwater system, drainage recommendation that Bruce had alluded to, the perk test, the 12-hour draining, and as well to include the condition that Joe had just described in his discussion with Councilman Hoagland, the final plat submittal with regards to the landscaping condition. That's a bit vague, but I think Joe's description probably can be captured clearly in the, in those final conditions and in a DA provision. So with those three clarifications, I move that we approve this application.
Second motion. I have a motion and a second to approve the item. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Gaviner.
Aye.
Row.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you, Joe and Nathan. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Have a great night.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Always welcome.
Item six, Department report from the mayor's office. Since we did not vacate this off the agenda, maybe I'll just make a reference for anyone looking for the discussion on this item to refer to the 6:00 PM, or I'm sorry, the 4:30 work session where this item was discussed, and the end result was the council did agree to allow applicants to apply for up to $15,000 through that process. So we have that on the record. Moving on, we'll move on to ordinances. And item seven is ordinance number 20-1904. Ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to H 2020 0078 1625 East Bentley Drive for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southwest one quarter of Section 17, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing, determining the land use zoning classification of 1.55 acres of land from RUT to CC, Community Business Zoning District in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel, for this item read by title. Is there anybody that would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 201094, the suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number 20-1904 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, say aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. The motion is approved and the ordinance is agreed to. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number 20-1905. I'll ask the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 1011, regarding adoption of 2018 International Building Code, 2018 International Residential Code, 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2018 International Energy Conservation Code, 2018 International Existing Building Code, and respective local amendments. Amending Meridian City Code, Section 1012, regarding amendments to the International Building Code, amending Meridian City Code, Section 1013, regarding amendments to the International Residential Code, repealing and replacing Meridian City Code, Section 1014, regarding amendments to International Energy Conservation Code, amending Meridian City Code, Section 1023B, regarding plumbing permit and inspection fees, amending Meridian City Code, Section 1033E, regarding electrical permit and inspection fees, repealing and replacing Title 10, Chapter 4, Meridian City Code, regarding adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code and Local Amendments, thereto, amending Meridian City Code, Section 1051, regarding adoption of the 2018 International Mechanical Code, 2018 International Fuel Gas Code, 2018 International Residential Code, Parts 5 and 6, and respective local amendments, amending Meridian Code, Section 1052, regarding amendments to the 2018 International Mechanical Code, amending Meridian City Code, Section 1053, regarding amendments to the International Fuel Gas Code, amending Meridian City Code, Section 1054, H through M, regarding amendments to Part 5 Mechanical and Part 6 Fuel Gas of the 2018 International Residential Code, adopting the savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you. We've, we've read this for first reading. Is there anyone that would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, we'll have this on next week for second reading. Counsel, is there any item under future meeting topics? And if not, item nine is executive session. Councilman Burnt.
I move that we go into executive session, Pareto Code 74-206A, 1A, and 74-2061F.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have motion, second, to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Gaviner.
Aye.
Row.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and we'll adjourn to executive session.
Can we have a two-minute break? Before we jump in? Thank you.